Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 5th, 2007. Welcome to our viewers and to our audience members to the John Ferraro Council chambers in Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., save for the first Friday of the month in which we meet in Van Nuys City Hall as we did this past Friday. We are broadcast live on Channel 35 and rebroadcast in the evening. We're also available online through our city's webcast at lacity.org, and you can also access Council video on demand now, a new service where you can pull down past meetings archived, get podcasts of the City Council, and also be able to listen to the testimony on individual items that the City Council has considered. Lastly, you can always call in on Council phone, which is a service of the City Council, in which you can call 213-621-CITY and listen to the proceedings of the City Council via your telephone. Again, that number is 213-621-CITY. I want to thank also members of the City Council who are here on time pursuant to Council policy. Council members Cardenas, Grul, Han, Labange, Parks, Rosendahl are all here. That gives us seven members. There are 15 members of the City Council, and we require two-thirds to be present to begin our meeting or quorum. Two-thirds, 10 members, and we are now at eight with Ms. Perry. Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Smith are excused today. That leaves Mr. Weezer that we are waiting for, Mr. Reyes we are waiting for, Mr. Weiss we are waiting for, Mr. Wesson we are waiting for, and Mr. Zine we are waiting for. As soon as we have two more members, we will begin the meeting. In the meantime, for members of the audience and anybody who would like to testify, you can always access our agendas online at lacity.org, a place where there's a wealth of information about city services and your elected officials, other information to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. Those agendas are also available live in person, 72 hours in advance, through the City Clerk's office. And finally, you can get them here in City Council chambers, and they are posted on the side of our chambers as well. Our agendas are split into two sections, those items in which we've had a public hearing in council committee, and those in which a public hearing has not yet been held. If you'd like to be heard for items that have not yet had a public hearing, please fill out a speaker card in the back and give it to one of our sergeants-at-arms, and they will make sure that we hear your testimony. Items which have already had a public hearing in committee will not hear a second hearing here in council unless a council member moves to do that. And finally, for general public comment, if folks would like to be heard on items not on our agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction, you can fill out a speaker card and give that to the sergeants-at-arms for our general public comment. Lastly, if you live closer to Van Nuys, you can testify remotely from our Van Nuys City Hall chambers. We invite members of the public, if they live closer to Van Nuys, via teleconferencing to be able to hear you here in council chambers. Thanks again to Council members Cardenas, Grul, Han, Labange, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, with myself, Councilmember Garcetti, that is eight members. We are still awaiting two more members of the following. Councilmember Weezer, we are awaiting your presence if you will make your way down as soon as possible. Councilmember Reyes, if you will join us in council chambers so we can begin our meeting. Councilmember Weiss, Wesson, and Zine, if you will join us. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, that's nine members. As soon as we have one more, we will begin the meeting. Again, Councilmembers Alarcon and Smith are excused today. Thank you, everybody, for your patience, and we hope to begin in just a minute. If I can ask the sergeants-at-arms if they can help assist us in bringing one of those councilmembers down so we can begin the meeting. A final quorum call for Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Weiss, Councilmember Wesson, and Councilmember Zine. Thank you.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present on a quorum. Ms. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Ms. Perry seconds. If there's no objection, that will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Laban seconds without objection. Those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Ms. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute that's been agendized.
All right. Mr. Reyes, will you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our salute to the flag.
Everybody stand. Right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Next order of business, Mr. Clerk.
Ms. President, you wish to take public comment at this time?
Yes, let's take public comment at the outset. We'll start in Van Nuys with Miriam Fogler. Good morning.
Good morning. We had a good meeting here Friday, and after, I mean, on the Wednesday, when you didn't let me speak on the other things, on Wednesday, I went over to the shelter, and the cats are in a very small room, like they were on Sherman Way. Now, that place is vacated and moved into the new one here on Van Owen Street. I was thinking, like, maybe we can make the animal shelter one for the cats only, so that they would have enough room, and the dogs will have the one for the dogs only. This way, we can have more room for the animals, because it's not very good over there. It's just opened up. And secondly, I'm thinking of just bringing pictures, because I don't know if it's a very good idea. I bring a cat in, I had to bring her in the carrier, because I don't want anybody getting me or anybody getting hurt, so I'll just bring in a carrier. I'll bring pictures and show my, the pictures of my cats that I adopted. What I wanted to say is that, you know, I would like to have my right to speak, and when I wasn't denied, I was denied on Wednesday to speak on the items. I don't know why you didn't call my name on time. I waited around here. You guys can set the timing, but I, I mean, I'm sitting around here waiting and waiting and waiting, and it is exhausting. I support the LAPD. There's no way out of this. And they, you know, the police department, Water &amp; Power, all the employees, they deserve to get pay raises every year, and they need to get their cost of living, and, you know, that they work very hard, and I want to be able to see that we have the best service here with the city. And I met a lot of the people here. I can't see you, but I know I spoke to some of the council people, and I'm very happy to meet them, and hope everything's well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Donna Pearman, and after that will be Lori Rabbitts. Good morning.
Member of the Garcetti Fan Club. Hello, Mr. Garcetti, I missed you on Friday. You probably won't hear good things, say good things about the City Council, but here goes. I was here on Friday.
Could you just put your face a little closer to the microphone? I'm sorry, we're losing a few of the words.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Anyway, I was here on Friday when the City Council came to Van Nuys, and it was really nice. I met and shook hands with Councilman Rosendahl, Rosendahl, I mean, Councilman Zine, Councilman Parks, Councilman Gardini, Councilman Herb Smith, Councilman Janice Han, and Madam President. Oh, I can't hear it. Though they almost didn't quorum, I guess they couldn't count to 10. I had a nice talk with Rosendahl and Zine and Mr. Parks that maybe really fell at home. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Garcetti, you missed the presentation done by Councilman Gardini. It was, you handsome man. When he presented with the courageous woman from Guatemala, her speech was moving. Anyway, and I hope you and Mr. Weezer, you handsome man, saw it on Channel 35, and public comments said for yours too. Madam President did it very well. She was polite to everyone and didn't interrupt. Mr. Garcetti, I miss him, act more like Ms. Grul. As a woman, I hope you get re-elected as president. I like seeing your handsome face. But as a voter, I'd like to see Councilman maybe, like Rosendahl, who doesn't bet with the CRA. Heard Councilman Herb Wesson is going to run for president. He has state assembly experience and may get it, so, Mr. Garcetti, don't be so sure you'll have your favorite seat come this July. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pearman, for your comments. Lori Rabbitts is our next speaker.
Bring her to the podium here. Thank you for letting me speak today. I want to talk about a cab service called City Cab. I take another cab service, I'm not going to talk about it, about them. I want to talk about City Cab is a real bad service. I had a terrible experience last Saturday night. Me and my friend were waiting and waiting and waiting for City Cab, and there was no City Cab. And we were waiting, like, at midnight. So, I'm just hoping that the other service can get rid of City Cab. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, and if you need to contact the Board of Transportation Commissioners, which oversees our taxi cabs, if you call 311, they can assist you as well. Marilyn Jackson is our next speaker here in council chambers. After that will be Oscar Johnson.
Good morning, Councilwoman Garcetti. I remember Janice Han's area, and my concern is young children in mental institutions, especially young girls. Several years ago, I had a mental breakdown, as I was in Norwalk Mental Institution. There were young girls there who, by way of life, when you go up in life and young men do not like you, you regress in society, and they place girls in mental institution. My concern is that if the state of California would possibly look in this situation where these young girls need bathing, clothing, and feeding by different individuals. I was very touched by this, because life is who you are. You cannot overcome who you are. If you are born in a poor area, you live in a poor area. You have housing, you have apartments, and you have that. And so my concern is special funding for young girls in mental institution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oscar Johnson is our next speaker. After Oscar Johnson is Monica Ripski.
My name is Oscar Johnson. I'm a pro activist for the city of Los Angeles, and I'm here to speak about the senseless killing that the police department is doing. They killed a young man on, a Monday from a week ago, about 11 o'clock on 89th and Main. We think policemen should be cap prosecuted with capital punishment, death penalty, because they get so much protection for, I guess, from the people that are in charge of the police department, though. And numerous of times I've said that Chief Barrington should be removed, and because we should come together some type of way and find some kind of clarity for Los Angeles instead of saying more rhetoric. But you have to excuse me, it's very difficult for me to stand before people who disrespect me, I'm not used to it, though. But anyway, we get no respect from our public leaders, though. It seems like our politicians don't respond to the people that respond to them through campaign, and they leave the other communities out, and they neglect the community, not sharing the information with us properly, and they not sharing the resources to the community. And Los Angeles is a crippled community. We need jobs, we need education, and we need full representation from the people that swung in to represent us. But that's why, I guess, we have the freedom of speech, we have the freedom to march and protest against cities, state, and federal government to protest for our rights, when our rights is neglected by our officials in office that don't protect our rights for us. Because I see where the district attorney, he fails numerous of times to solve unsolved murders in Los Angeles. Eighty, ninety-five percent unsolved murders, and people today that go to court to prosecute people, offenders, they tell you that you have to get your own lawyers to prosecute. The district attorney don't prosecute, you know, certain type of murder cases in the law. And the victim, victim parents have to, have to get their own attorneys, and I think that's very unfair. They have a lot of money, they're going to spend the money on us, they're just going to keep the net, keep the money and use it for their own purposes instead of respecting the will of the people.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Monica Ripski is our next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Good morning, City Council, Channel 35. Just want to say a short prayer first to help the performance of the City Council. Dear God, I want to thank you for the City Council that you've had elected here, and I hope you can use guidance through them to make things right in the city. I want to thank you for the city attorneys we have, Dion O'Connell, and all the city attorneys. I know that it's a tough job, and, but I know that, you know, they're there for a reason. And as Bill Rosendahl says, you don't make mistakes, people do. Just like Griffith Park, there was no mistake, you know, when they want to destroy a park, when God, God has that power. So, thank you, Lord, for everything you're giving us, and we want to try our best to make sure that, you know, we all see the truth in the right way. Thank you. Now, I want to just take a few seconds, talk about Venice Beach. Got a new performance down there now, too, is a girl, was an American Idol finalist, Angela Peale. I'm going to be performing with her in the weekend, going to be recording some songs. We're in court with a federal judge right now, and he's, he wants us to settle this case, but I know you all wanted a judgment. Everybody said, oh, no, we're not going to settle the case with Dowd and Hunt. We want to settle it, but I think we need to get him to rule, because that's the only thing it looks like people respect, and maybe when we get that and, you know, we win, then we'll deal with what comes after that, but it's God's will and all power to him. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. That's our final speaker for public comment today. Mr. Clerk, if we can run through the agenda.
Item one is an item notice for public hearing, and there are cards on that.
All right. We have a card for that, so we'll call that special. Next items, please.
Items two through nine are items which public hearings have been held.
All right. Colleagues, any specials? This is two through nine now. Items two through nine. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items. Oh, number six? We just did, okay. Can we reconsider it? Number six, please. Open the roll. Reconsideration for Mr. Rosendahl. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Call that special for Mr. Rosendahl. Next items, please.
Items 10 through 28 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. 10 through 28. We do have cards on 15 and 18. We'll call those special for cards from the public. Do you have any other cards, Mr. Clerk, or is that?
I have none, Ms. President.
Okay, we will open and close the rest of the public hearings, then. Any specials, colleagues? Any specials 10 through 28? Going once, going twice, specials 10 through 28? Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the continuation page, item 29 is an item which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. We do have a card on that. I'm sorry, you said public hearing has not been held, so we'll call that special. For card from the public. Okay? And if we can go back to the first special item?
I would take you back to item one.
Item number one is John Ruland is our first speaker, and then Karen Dial will be the next speaker after that. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here this morning. We appreciate this. My name is John Ruland. I'm a resident of Westchester. I'd like to give you a very brief background of why we're here today. In 2001, LEDOT came to our community to open, to remodel Sepulveda Boulevard from the Howard Hughes Parkway down to the airport with an eight-lane highway. Our community wasn't too happy about that. We had a town hall meeting, and about 800 people showed up at that. LEDOT gave their presentation, and we had a resident in the community that gave a PowerPoint presentation of how to calm traffic, to make it more pedestrian-friendly, and how to make it more fit into the community. And from that, our councilwoman formed a committee to work with both the community and the LEDOT. That committee is now a 501(c)(3) corporation. It's called the Westchester Streetscape Improvement Association, and I have submitted brochures for you to take a look at that. We hired a design team to help us out. We had three community design workshops. The first one was, what do you like, what don't you like, what would you like Sepulveda to look like? The second one was, this is what we heard. We had three different selections. The community selected one of those selections, and the final one was, this is what you want, and now how are you going to take care of it? And out of that workshop came the idea from the community to form a bid, a P-bid, and that is the root of why we're here. We've been working for a year and a half to form the bid, and we're here today to request your support on that. We were very fortunate to have one of the property owners, Howard Drollinger, who I think most of you may know, solicit the property owners, the rest of the property owners to support this. And with his support, we were able to get this far. So, we're before you today, hoping that you will approve this. Westchester is one of the gateways or the entrances into Los Angeles, and we want you to be proud of it as well as us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments today. Karen Dial is our next speaker. After that will be Donald Duckworth. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Karen Dial. I represent the Drollinger Company in Westchester. My father, Howard Drollinger, started this company 60 years ago. His vision was to make Westchester a thriving business community which would encompass bistros, cafes, music, incorporating families and and Loyola Marymount students to come and be part of our thriving group of community and of businesses. My grandmother, Ella, some of you may know, started the company in the late '40s. She was a pioneer. We are here today to represent the Business Improvement District, which is a necessity to the last piece of the puzzle for Westchester. And we also are seeking $250,000, which is a drop in the bucket compared to what we've already got. This is to purchase lights and wiring installation of the lights. This is the last piece of the puzzle, which will completely finish our gorgeous Westchester downtown, which my father had a huge vision for. And he was a big supporter of this group, including our Westchester Streetscape Association, which is the group responsible for putting together the bid. So we hope that everyone is on board with us, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dial. Donald Duckworth is our last speaker.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Don Duckworth, and we've been fortunate enough to work with the Westchester Business Improvement Association in forming this bid. I just wanted to make myself available if there's any questions that I might answer for any of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's our last public speaker. I'd like to recognize the council member from the 11th District in Westchester, Mr. Bill Rosendahl.
This opportunity to address my colleagues on a very vital issue for us in Westchester. Karen Dial was very humble, obviously, in her opening comments there. But her dad, Howard Drollinger, was one of the pillars and the founders of Westchester. An incredible man, and frankly, on a personal level, he looked like my father, and I just felt this great relationship with him. And I was able to give him a certificate as he had a birthday, and shortly thereafter, he passed on. So I had the pleasure of being with him in the last couple of months of his life. A man of great leadership, great energy, and a positive spirit for all of us in the area. Tremendous loss, but the apple doesn't fall too far from the tree. And Karen is as much a leader as her dad was, and has taken great interest in community affairs. You know, John Roland, who was very humble when he got up and spoke, historically has been one of the founders of the entire Sepulveda scape-ing process that's been going on for years, and has very diligently focused on making that a beautiful area. To create the bid is obviously the natural next step, so that we, as a community in Westchester, can have the leadership engaged with the city in going forward and making it the gateway to Los Angeles. We all know when we get off the plane, if we don't go down Century Boulevard, we go on Sepulveda, and we enter right into Westchester. It's the first impression that many people have. And the community is so excited about making it a beautiful entry into the city of Los Angeles, as well as a prosperous opportunity for people in Westchester to enjoy the neighborhoods around Sepulveda that are so vital to the community. So I ask for your unanimous support on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you for your good work in Westchester. Our next speaker is Ms. Hahn, and then Mr. Labange will be after that. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm happy to follow the councilman of the area, Bill Rosendahl, to also add my bit of support and enthusiasm for the Westchester bid. And I agree, Howard Drollinger certainly was Mr. Westchester. That's how he was known, that's how he will always be known. And it's great, Karen, that you're taking up the torch and following in his footsteps by continuing to fight for the preservation, the beautification, the improvement of Westchester. I have great memories of Westchester. I actually lived in Westchester for, gee, about 11 years. All three of my children were born and came home to grow up in Westchester. And I remember, I know this really dates me, but I went to the Loyola Theater when it was like 25 cents and a candy wrapper to go see a double feature all day on Saturday. And so I have fond memory of the Imperial Bank that was on the corner there. I really kind of grew up, and Westchester was my stomping grounds. So I know what it means to the whole city. It truly is the gateway to the city. And it's nice to see that you have Donald Duckworth working on your bid as well. He's also working on a bid in my area, down in San Pedro, that has its own set of challenges. But bids are important, and I know how much work goes into forming a bid. And we really want to thank those of you who have volunteered your time to really do a lot of the hard work, the heavy lifting, to create this bid. But Westchester really is a shining star in the city of Los Angeles. And we do have millions of people who enter Los Angeles and leave Los Angeles from the airport. And Westchester certainly is the gateway, the welcoming mat, and a place where we already are very proud of Westchester, but we know it can be better. And so I really want to support this bid and wish it great, great success. I do really believe in business improvement districts. I think they are able to leverage dollars, they're able to leverage resources, and they really are a way to improve the different business communities all around Los Angeles. There's more than just one downtown in Los Angeles, and Westchester is one of those downtowns that has such a great history and a great future. So congratulations, and anything we can do on the City Council to continue to support that, we want to do that. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Very nice. And it's so true, it's people make a difference in all the neighborhoods. And Mr. Drollinger, as you said, I remember there, on the gateway, right on the letterhead, his name, and right up there on the top, and all of his work. But Mr. Rosendahl, I was just wondering, too, is there, you know what DASH stands for? Downtown Area Short Hop. And I just wonder if there's an LAX-area short hop where people who have time could take a short hop into Westchester and do commerce there? And I think it's an opportunity that should be made from a short hop so people who have time. I just came through transportation systems recently, and I was thinking about it in Los Angeles, so I wanted to put that on your mind. You could see, because sometimes people have hours to stay. Instead of sitting around buying a bottle of water for $5, they could buy it for $1.25 in Westchester and do better there. But enjoy Westchester. We were just there recently at Fire Station 5, that brand-new, beautiful fire station that serves the community as well. And I just spoke this morning to Father Cahalan, the chancellor out at Loyola Marymount, which does a great job for the schools. There's a lot to say about Westchester. I remember the fight, your predecessor, Miss Galanter, spoke so eloquently in the whole discussion about whether Sepulveda should be widened or not. Sepulveda, Sepulveda, let it be, let's beautify it, slow down, keep people to go through the area in a nice fashion, but enjoy Westchester as well. And Janice, you went to the movies when it was 25 cents. I remember we used to go out there, and it was not just in Westchester, but it was there. We used to race go-karts. Remember the go-kart place down there? They had the greatest popcorn in the city, was down there. And Dyna's Chicken, is they still there? They had the greatest coleslaw. So there's enough of Westchester for you. Yeah, pineapple, you got it, Herb West is in that there. You got it there.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. That's our last speaker from the council queue. So with that, let's go ahead and open the roll.
Mr. President, actually, this is just the public hearing, so council should close the hearing, and the ballot tabulation will be tomorrow.
Great. We will have that, then. Official vote will be tomorrow, and that will be the public hearing, as required by law. Thank you all to members of the Westchester community who made time to be here today, and the council members for your comments as well. Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Item six was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Okay. Item number six, Mr. Rosendahl, is our next one. Why don't we hold that on the table for a moment? And let's go to item 15.
Item 15 was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Matt Dowd on item number 15, please.
Yeah, thank you. It's worth a mention, this one. It's a community item. Janice Hahn, of course, skate park facility, extend the contract. These are great. You've got to get the kids out doing these kind of activities. In fact, I've got to get Zuma Dog out of the blog right now and get him to come down to one of these skate parks. He's busy blogging all the Glassell Park injustices, but that is a little off-topic, so... But I want to get him out there. He's popular with all the kids, and I just don't know what he's going to be like on a skateboard, though. Mr. Zuma Dog, since he's not here today, I'll give him a mention. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. That closes our public comment on that item. If we can go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We can go back to number six now. That was called special by Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl, item number six.
We're moving around on a lot of issues this morning, folks, and so I'd like staff to come out and speak about this a little bit. We're talking about transmission of diseases that take place in the prisons. And I think a startling statistic, colleagues, is this, what I'm going to say. 20% of the male inmates, that's one out of five, and 27% of the female inmates reported pressured or forced sex incidents while incarcerated. Can you imagine that in the prison system? One out of five men and 27% of the women have some form of interaction against their will. This is not consenting sex. This is against their will, where diseases are transmitted. Over 23,000 prisoners right now are HIV-positive. It's three times more contact in terms of spreading diseases than the civilian population. It's a big deal, and I'd like staff to take it a step further. Please, introduce yourselves and tell us why we're here today.
Michael Karsh with the Legislative Analyst Office. I also have Cheryl Benares, who did our report to the council on this bill. And we have our city aides' office, on whose recommendation we have based our report. Which do you wish of us to begin speaking?
I guess I'll chime in, Councilmember Rosendahl. We sent a recommendation to the CLA's office on this bill, because we think it's vital that condoms are available in our jail systems or prison systems across the state. We've discussed this issue before. The stats you're stating are very important. There is a lot of forced sex in jails, but there also is a lot of consensual sex. And bottom line is, from a public health standpoint, we need to make sure people have access to condoms, dental dams, and other devices that can stop the spread of HIV and hepatitis C. This bill does that. A similar bill went, passed the legislature last year, was vetoed. We think this bill makes appropriate adjustments. It does not decriminalize sex in jail. That's a whole other discussion. It just makes sure that the barrier protection is available, and we definitely recommend its support.
And, you know, one of my colleagues just came over, Mr. Weston, and said, you know, when I said one out of five, that's those who are willing to be open about it and report about it. Many inmates, men and women, are embarrassed, ashamed, and don't want to discuss it any further. But you must understand this, this is not homosexual sex. These are not homosexual people. What it is, is a form of power-grabbing that does go on within the prison system, and a form of prison sex, which frankly, has a different mindset than non-prison sex. And the second part of this disastrous reality is this. When these men and women come out of that incarcerated state, they don't share these discussions with their loved ones, their partners, their husbands, their wives, their girlfriends, their boyfriends. And so what happens is, we find that these diseases, HIV and others, are transmitted more to people of color these days than any other group. In fact, women of color are the largest segment outside of youth, who are out there learning about themselves, in terms of spreading diseases. And so my partial urge is to anybody watching this, that if one of your closest ones has gone through the criminal justice system, you must clearly understand the status of that person. Makes it even more important that condoms are used in body fluid exchanging of sex. Historically, when I toured the county jails a bunch of years ago, I was appalled at the conditions in the old jail of our county jail. In fact, at 1:00 in the afternoon, it was dimly lit, there were five or six guys per cell, and one could sense already that there was a macho leadership in one cell and one and another, and God only knows what kinds of interactions have taken place. I turned to Sheriff Baca, and I said, Sheriff, you have to have condoms available. Not that everybody's going to use them, but this could be a vital step in stopping the spread. He then heard me enough that, at least in the areas where people were segregated because they were gay or openly gay and admitted it, that they would dispense it. I said, to the contrary, it must also be in the general population of the prisoners, because prison sex is different than sex outside because of the dynamics within the prison system. So I make it very clear, we must not only support this, but the governor has to sign it, because there are lives at stake. Not only the prisoner's life by getting these diseases, but their friends outside of the jails that will also find themselves contaminated. This is a great piece of legislation. I urge your unanimous support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let's go ahead.
Mr. President, can I add just one more comment?
Sure, please.
If this were to pass now, that and the three bills you passed earlier this morning that were agendized items would be the largest package of HIV legislation that this city has stood behind in one package, certainly in recent years. And between the other prison bill, which is around testing in prison, there was another bill that you passed, the FURE, 1442, which would make it easier to do testing in our community-based organizations. And you also passed a bill, a recommendation or support of a bill, by Assemblywoman Berg, that would make it much easier to do testing in medical settings, would simply simplify the process. So again, this is a very vital package, and we thank you again for your attention and support.
Thank you. And four of the five passed earlier, and so this is the last one before us. Yes, Mr. Karsh?
Reading file in the assembly, which means it will be voted on by Friday. That is the deadline to clear bills out of the House.
If it passes, we will send that forthwith. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. And are there any others that we need to send forthwith? Should we be sending all of those, Mr. Karsh? Should we be sending all those forthwith?
Yes.
Without objection, we'll send all five forthwith to the mayor for his signature. Next item, please.
Item 18 called special for cards from the public.
Okay. We have cards on item number 18. Peter Beebring, or Bybring, excuse me, is our first speaker. Excuse me, Peter. And then Erin McMorrow will be next.
Thank you. Peter Beebring for the ACLU of Southern California in support of Councilmember Parks' motion to support SB 1019, which is crucial legislation to restore transparency to police disciplinary process. This is really a simple equation. Transparency in police disciplinary process is required for trust in the disciplinary process. Disciplinary processes held behind closed doors fuel the impression that there is something to hide, that the disciplinary process is a cover-up. Trust in the disciplinary process is necessary for trust in the officer on the street, which is necessary for good policing. This is a bill that has broad support, not only from councilmembers Parks, Perry, and Rosendahl, but from the mayor, Chief Bratton, and numerous First Amendment groups and civil rights groups, law enforcement groups that include the National Black Police Association and the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. This is a very limited measure, SB 1019. It goes no further than restoring the state of affairs that existed prior to the Supreme Court's decision in Copley last fall by authorizing only those practices that existed before that time. It, in fact, does not even go that far. It codifies a safety valve exception that would protect, that would allow closure of hearings in cases where there was a threat to officer safety or a compromise of officer of operational security, such as the revealing of confidential informant identities. Support of this bill is consistent with this council's commitment to openness into the police process. In fact, with this version of SB 1019, no person can credibly proclaim commitment to police openness and fail to support this bill. Finally, I just want to stress, there is not a privacy interest on the part of officers in a secret police. We confer on officers' authority to investigate, arrest, and use deadly force on ourselves and our neighbors, and an interest in privacy does not override an interest in knowing how our government functions in this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin McMorrow is our next speaker. After that will be Deborah Burton.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Erin McMorrow, and I'm here representing the Los Angeles Coalition to End Hunger and Homelessness. I'm speaking in support of item number 18, to support SB 1019, which will increase police transparency... item number 18, to support SB 1019, which will increase police transparency, oversight, and accountability. The L.A. Coalition to End Hunger and Homelessness supports this item because we believe it helps to build public trust and to promote public safety throughout the state. We are in favor of reinstating the open complaint review process like those that were in place before the California Supreme Court decision, Copley-Press versus San Diego. Noting that the homeless population in Los Angeles and in every society is one of the most vulnerable populations to violations of civil liberties, we believe that mechanisms must be in place to promote police transparency. SB 1019 would open the door for legal services and other advocates to have the tools to effectively protect these vulnerable citizens. We all appreciate the job the police do to keep the public safe, but when police misconduct occurs, the public needs to be aware of the problems, as well as the steps police leadership take to solve them. With the public's trust, public safety officers can be more effective in their role in our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Debra Burton is our next speaker. After that, it will be Christine Chavez.
My name is Debra Burton. I am a downtown resident, also a member of L.A. CAN. I urge you to support Parks's recommendation to draft a resolution in support of SB 1019. On June 3, an African-American woman in Skid Row was beaten to a bloody mess. Downtown residents enraged and nearly began a riot with the LAPD. She weighed only 90 pounds, about my size. She was beaten, hit with batons, struck with fists, and mace. We urge, we need a police transparency in our city more now than ever. The Mayday melee, Devin Brown and Susan Pinter only serve as an example of why. More importantly, the public needs trust in the LAPD has disintegrated, and only full disclosure can begin to mend the broken trust. This is done near, this was done near a public video camera on Sixth and Town. We demand justice and transparency. Councilman Parks, I have a video of the testimony of eyewitnesses that was at this incident, June 3. This was done in Weeza's community.
We'll make sure one of the sergeants-at-arms gets that from me. Thank you. Thank you. Christine Chavez, welcome.
Mr. President and members, my name is Christine Chavez, and I serve as the District Director for State Senate Majority Leader Gloria Romero. She's asked me to come here and read a statement, and this is essentially the statement that she read on the Senate floor yesterday. Before I begin, I want to thank Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Perry, and Councilmember Rosendahl for your support of this bill. And as you know, this bill did pass the Senate yesterday on a 21 to 10 count despite the political threats. SB 1019 abrogates the Copley-Press decision. It restores public access to those peace officer records and meetings that were open to the public prior to Copley. The Copley decision shut down the public's right to know in every city, county, and agency in California, including our own State Personnel Board, where it had previously been open. But in shutting the door on sunshine and transparency, the court clearly stated that this was a policy issue for the legislature to decide. Good policing depends upon the trust of the public. Few public servants affect our liberty and lives as profoundly as do police officers. Most honor the badge, yet we know some violate it. If your attorney is disciplined or disbarred, you can find that out. It's public information. If your doctor loses his license, you can find that out. It's public information. If any one of us is arrested, not convicted, just arrested, or any of our staff or friends or family members, we can find that out. It's public information. But if the police officer that arrested you is disciplined or even terminated for serious misconduct, it's completely secret now after the Copley case. Government should never operate completely in the dark. That's why the court specifically stated that this was a policy decision for us in the room to decide. Members, this bill is permissive, not mandatory. It allows those jurisdictions that want to restore public access an avenue to do so. Opponents have argued that restoring public access might endanger officers. So I amended the bill to provide for withholding information and additional protections to officers if police chiefs certify that this might occur. Furthermore, the bill, Senator Romero asked for your support. Thank you.
Tim Watkins is our next speaker.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I'd like to echo the sentiments of the previous speakers and add to that, that, you know, down in Watts, where we operate, we understand clearly today that poor public policy drives poverty like nothing else. More than the lack of will on the part of the people that suffer poverty, poor public policy causes it. And so when we look at, you know, a 13-year-old that gets killed in the middle of the night, and the officer that was involved in that killing is not able to be held accountable under the scrutiny of the public eye, the taxpayers' eye, then we lose the opportunity for there to be local accountability. And I think that under no circumstances should anyone be above the law. And the only way that we can hold these officers accountable that practice trends of violating the civil rights of our citizens is if we can take a look at their record and understand how often complaints are filed against them. So transparency is a solution. I'm in support of the bill and would encourage the City Council to embrace it and support it wholly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker is Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have the CLA come up, please? Thank you. Jerry, could you just walk us through, this legislation's gone through, I think, at least three changes or major changes, and give us an overview on where we are today?
Certainly, yes. It has gone through, through some revisions since it was introduced. Briefly, I think initially the bill mandated certain things, and it, but it went through a process. And essentially, what you have before you now is, as was indicated by Senator Romero's staff, a permissive bill. What this bill would do would be to allow the council to adopt an ordinance that, in essence, it takes the city back to doing business the way it did business with, related to a Board of Rights hearings before the Copley decision.
Now, one thing, and I don't know whether the analysis covered this, but there was some confusion early on in the legislation of whether the actual court decision actually mandated the closure of the hearings in the first place. Has that ever been resolved? Because that was some of the discussion early on, but, or whether it was our interpretation that closed the hearings?
Well, my staff, on down, my staff has worked with city attorney and police department. The decision itself specifically said that it did not apply to Board of Rights hearings. However, through a lot of work and exhaustive analysis, the practical impact of that decision is such that the information that would be discussed and disclosed during the Board of Rights hearings would have made it infeasible to continue to open those hearings. So though it said they weren't deciding on Board of Rights hearings, in essence, everyone in the state agreed that there really was no practical way of keeping those hearings open, given that decision.
Because of the material that was being discussed is what drove it?
Correct.
Okay. The other issue I was concerned about is that, what is it, if this bill is passed, what is it that the city has to do to take advantage of it?
The city would need to adopt an ordinance. And again, the bill is clear that the intent is to take cities back to doing business the way they did business before the decision. So the council would need to adopt an ordinance that sets out the procedures for the Board of Rights hearings and what information is disclosed and not disclosed. There have always been elements of the hearings that have not been open. Once a decision is made on a particular event, the penalty phase and any review of an officer's prior personnel history, et cetera, those have always been closed, and they would continue to be closed going forward.
Okay. The other issue I was concerned about is that, as we move forward on this, does this impact at all on the issue that was discussed a while back on the shooting material? Does this cover that material also, or is that a separate, totally separate issue, as far as putting the names out of officers involved in officer-involved shootings?
I believe the names themselves, disclosing the names in shootings would still be confidential, is my understanding.
Okay. So this doesn't cover that eventuality of what was, because that came first. I was wondering, is this all encompassing, or is it just dealing with Boards of Rights?
No. You know, sometime before the Copley decision, for privacy concerns and Police Officer Bill of Rights, the names of officers involved were not disclosed. So that is a separate issue.
Okay. Colleagues, I just wanted to thank, Mr. Smith isn't here today, but to the fact that he waived this out. And then, one other thing, Jerry, tell us what the status is. I think the Senate voted on this yesterday or something?
It did. The Senate passed it yesterday. It now goes to the Assembly Public Safety Committee, the policy committees. It would need to get out of the Assembly by July, the committee, by July 13.
Okay. Colleagues, I just wanted to share with you an editorial that was published this morning regarding this issue. We are very pleased Mr. Smith waived this so that our voices could be heard on the Assembly debate. I think it's a much better bill as they've revised it, but the issue of Boards of Rights being open has been a mainstay for this city for a number of years. It was unfortunate that the first board that it was closed on, the first one that the information came back, happened to be Devin Brown, which was a very volatile situation in the community, about a 13-year-old that was shot out in the community. And so this is something, I think, brings us back to some hard-fought decisions over time, to make the discipline system very open, and the public can go in and actually monitor a case that they may be concerned about. My final question, Jerry, is would we have to do this as a charter, or would we do it on an ordinance?
By ordinance.
By ordinance. Okay. Thank you very much. I'd ask for an eye vote on this item.
Ms. Perry, followed by Mr. Zine, and then followed by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I also wanted to rise in support of our efforts here today. We often talk as a body, policymaking body, about the need for openness, openness to the public and ability to access information. I believe that this is, this bill is worthy of our support, even in light of things that have already happened this year. To be able to access information, to be able to provide analysis, not only would assist us in being compliant with the consent decree, but it aids us in a risk-management way to be proactive in making sure that we are monitoring and tracking information that may be relevant to the decisions that we make as a policymaking body. So I would also ask for an eye vote, and let's move forward.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The court ruled in this Copley decision for a specific reason. Can you go into that detail? Can you hold my time to get answer on that, please? The court ruled, the California Supreme Court ruled on the Copley case that this would be restricted information.
Correct.
Why did they rule that way?
Why did they?
Yes. I mean, the highest court in the state of California ruled that this is protected information. And we're saying by this bill, and what this motion calls for, is to go against that court decision.
Well, the court ruled, specifically, it was Copley Press versus, I believe it was the County of San Diego. And Copley wanted disclosure of some information. And I may get my staff in if you want more detail, but essentially, the Copley knew service wanted disclosure of information. The court found that state law, essentially the Police Officer Bill of Rights, prevented the disclosure of that information. And the decision that the court came down with, and the specifics of what can and can't be disclosed and how, the practical implication of that is, although they didn't specifically intend it to, the practical implication is it closed Board of Rights hearings as well. It wasn't just about disclosing private information to the press. As it turned out, it closed down the Board of Rights hearings. Prior to that, and again, it wasn't a change in law, it was a court decision. The hearings have been open, as you know, since probably the 70s. And everyone across the state assumed that those public Board of Rights hearings were perfectly appropriate under the law. So since that decision, in essence, virtually every large agency, city and county of San Diego, San Francisco, San Jose, the city of Los Angeles, all changed their practices with regard to Board of Rights. So what this bill would do is, in essence, clarify that the state law does, in fact, allow open Board of Rights hearings. It does not, it still doesn't allow for disclosure of personnel information. It still would require that penalty phases and officers' personnel records, et cetera, be done in private. It, in essence, would allow cities to go back to the way they did business before the Copley decision nine months ago.
Mr. President, if you were to hold my time. Most of that time was...
I'll make sure you get it back. Don't worry.
Thank you. The issue of officers' rights. Now, we recruit officers to do a job. We want to protect their rights. They also have a right to privacy, and they have a right, when they do something wrong, to know that it's going to become public. The findings of the Board of Rights, while the Board of Rights are now closed according to the Copley decision, the findings of the Board of Rights, is that made public? In other words, the officer is found innocent or guilty at a Board of Rights. Is that information then released?
The findings of the Board of Rights would be released.
Now, under the current status, would the Copley decision...
Under the current status, they are, yes, they're released.
So the information regarding the findings of the Board of Rights, whether the officer's innocent or guilty, and the officer's identity, would then be released after the hearing takes place, under the Copley decision as it stands today. So the only difference is the hearing itself, the disciplinary hearing itself, the Board of Rights hearing, is closed to the media and closed by the organization to outside, whomever wants to monitor. It is a closed hearing. But the findings and the rationale for the findings are those then made public. And is the transcript of that particular process made public? Under the current rule?
Under the current rule, the decision of the Board of Rights is made public. The transcripts, as we saw, I think with the Devin Brown case, the transcripts and the details and the basis for those findings wouldn't be made public, for the most part, unless the officer waived the confidentiality rights, which is what occurred with the Devin Brown situation.
Now, in a situation where an officer is found innocent of the charges, how is that handled on a Board of Rights hearing? Because we're only talking about Board of Rights. We're not talking about an administrative process where an officer fails to qualify, or an officer fails to check out equipment and gets administrative discipline. We're not talking about that type of discipline. We're only talking about Board of Rights hearings.
Board of Rights hearings, correct.
So strictly the Board of Rights hearings, where an officer is sent to a Board of Rights, either on their own initiative or directed by the organization?
Correct.
Okay. So when a Board of Rights is convened, and an officer is found innocent, well, obviously the only people who are going to be interested are the parties to that, or the press on occasion, because there's many Board of Rights that don't generate any public interest whatsoever. And then there are some Board of Rights, obviously, generate a lot of public interest. And for the, in past situations, I know that the department has closed a Board of Rights hearing to the press, where the department has stated that we don't want this to be open, we want to close this to the press. And they've done that on occasion.
Correct.
But normally, a Board of Rights hearing for an incident would take place, the finding would be done, and the officer would either remain status with the department, or some other action would be taken. But I'm trying to find where this, and there's been a number of modifications to this, once the bill was initially introduced by Senator Romero to where it is today, and the current status of this bill, as it goes through, and I understand it passed by the bare minimum in the Senate, the current reading of that bill, the current provisions, how do those provisions modify LAPD Board of Rights hearings from before Copley till after Copley? In other words, if this passes, then how is the Board of Rights hearings going to change from the prior to Copley decision?
If this bill passes, what the council would need to do is adopt an ordinance, if it so chose. This bill would not automatically open the hearings. The council...
Because it gives jurisdictions the opportunity to keep them closed.
Exactly. It leaves the decision-making power with this council. You would have to adopt an ordinance to, in essence, restore the Board of Rights hearings process to the process that was followed before the Copley decision.
Okay. And then it would be restored to the area and the conditions and the situations prior to Copley. So whatever was made public at that time, the openness of the hearing would then return?
Absolutely.
So nothing would change other than reverting back to what was the previous status within the Los Angeles Police Department, the Board of Rights hearings?
That's correct.
And there's no other impact on any other disciplinary matters other than a Board of Rights on this particular bill?
It only impacts Board of Rights. I will say that there is one wrinkle in the bill, that it does allow the chief of police to determine that information should not be disclosed, and it provides that the commission could overturn that decision. But this only applies to Board of Rights hearings, and the intent of the bill clearly is to let local jurisdictions go back to the way they did business before the Copley decision.
And just one more statement, the Protective League sent a letter out regarding this, and they cited in this letter circumstances about an individual who filed 100 unfounded complaints against an officer to get him off the street. If Copley is undone, these kinds of accusations could become public, regardless of the merits of the investigation. Have you seen this letter?
Again, I have not seen the... Again, I have not seen the letter, but the Board of Rights hearings, as you know, a Board of Rights hearing involves...
How do you know?
Not that you've ever been to one, but in your...
Yeah, I do know.
Let me restate that. Yeah.
Not a pleasant experience, I must say.
A Board of Rights hearing, it applies to a specific incident.
Right.
And officers' past history and the number of complaints filed have always been confidential. Those don't come into play unless there's a determination on a particular incident that something was out of policy. So when the penalty phase and officers' prior history, prior complaints, et cetera, are brought in, but those have always been closed and would continue to be closed.
On the penalty phase?
On the penalty phase.
And is that included in the bill, that that would still be restricted?
Yes. This only allows us to go back to the situation where, the same process before Copley. Before Copley, as you know, the penalty phases were always confidential. Those were never...
But this doesn't open it up to include other areas that weren't covered before? Can I understand an officer's right, also the public's right, and the transparency? But there used to be a situation where someone filed a false complaint against a police officer, they could prove it's false, they could file a case against the individual. The court ruled against that. Same people can file complaints against police, and they don't have any recourse against them. It's got to be a fair and balanced system. My concern is for the officers and their families, that we have a fair, transparent system, and not to, as stated in this letter, 100 false complaints filed against a police officer to get them off that particular beat, because we know sometimes people file false complaints. That officer has no recourse in that arena. They have to have some protection, and if it is then brought out at a Board of Rights, where this has then became public, become public, this officer has 100 complaints. My God, what is he doing when it turns out that there's 100 false complaints?
This bill would not result in disclosure of that information. That is personnel information that would be done, if it comes up at all in the penalty phase, under a closed session.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I rise to support this bill for one very basic reason. Now more than ever, we need to establish a sense of trust by allowing this transparency to exist. When you look at the key provisions of this bill, and it's been stated 100 times, but I need to say it one more time, SB 10-19 specifically overturns the Copley Press decision by excluding civilian review boards, personnel boards, police commissions, or civil service commissions from keeping officers' personnel records confidential if there is an investigation proceeding regarding peace officer misconduct. The bill also allows charter cities to follow the practices they followed before the Copley Press decision, and states that a department or agency may release information regarding a peace officer when there is a sustained complaint, discipline imposed, demotion, removal, et cetera. These are the kinds of, for lack of a better word, realities exist in many of our neighborhoods, where you do have the kind of actions from certain officers that are highly questionable, shootings that are questionable, that need to be investigated. This can only enhance the trust in supporting our officers. If we know who we can support, the folks, the men and women in blue who are wearing that uniform, that communication is enhanced, the trust is enhanced, and seeing that my district overlaps some of the area that Senator Romero covers, we both have a perspective and understanding of what our committees have suffered over the years. So to bring back what was already in place does not hurt. It can only support and help our environment, and we want to stimulate that trust. So I stand to support this bill and encourage an eye vote. Thank you.
Mr. Labange is next.
Call for the question.
Is any objection to the question? Okay. Seeing none, that will end debate. So if there's no objection, that means the end of debate. Now is time for a vote. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, one no.
That is approved, and we'll send that forthwith without objection. Okay? Next item, please.
Item 29, call special for Cards From The Public.
Okay, we've got two cards, starting with Miriam Fogler, out in Van Nuys. She's not there, okay. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. Mr. Dowd here. Do not see him in council chambers either, so we will close the public hearing on that item. Councilmembers wishing to be heard, if not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting a referral?
Those are posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Announcements, colleagues? And then, Mr. Rosendahl, you have an announcement for tonight? You have a meeting in your district?
And thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements to make. First, I have an announcement about tonight. You know, there's been a lot of consternation and interest in Westchester and Playa del Rey about modernizing LAX. And when we talk about modernizing, we're not talking about expansion. And so we're very upset with what seems to be a direction that makes no sense to any of us. So I'm holding a town hall meeting tonight on talking about LAX and the Northern Runway and modernization. It's at 7 o'clock tonight at the Westchester Senior Center, which is 8740 Lincoln Boulevard. That is where my office is, right there in Manchester and Lincoln. And there'll be an overflow crowd. We're expecting LAU officials to explain to us various options of a study that was just done, that frankly, we find to be ludicrous. There are like five different reports that came out that are all skewed in a direction that makes no sense to any of us. So we're expecting to hear that. I'll have a panel of community people reacting, plus the community itself. So if you care about LAX and you care about Westchester and Playa del Rey, you'll be there tonight at 7 o'clock at the Westchester Senior Center. Also, I'd like to announce that on Thursday night, and Janice Hahn will like this one too, we're going to have a town hall in Venice on potential tsunamis and flooding. It's about high waves, flooding, and disaster awareness and preparedness with tsunamis. We have all kinds of experts coming to talk about it, and frankly, you know, people don't know this, that right now Venice is a threatened area because it is low-lying coastal area. And scientists will tell us of the latest research on hazards, and local agencies will discuss what preparations have been made for disasters and high waves. Frankly, the neighborhoods there are going to be coming out, because we want to find out if we know of one coming, how do we get out of there? And how do we move? We've done a series on earthquakes. We did one in Westchester. We're going to do another one in the Brentwood area there. But for those who live in the Venice area, when you have an earthquake, as Tom Labange is suggesting, an earthquake can create the tsunami like we saw in the South Pacific a year and a half ago. So again, that is Thursday night. That town hall will be on June 7th, from 7 to 9, at the Westminster Elementary School, which is 1010 Abbott Kenny Boulevard. We urge everybody from the neighborhood council, which is really the host of this, they've asked me to moderate it, and there'll be all kinds of experts. And then again, back to tonight, please come at 7 o'clock. About the LAX business, over to the Westchester office that I have there, the senior center on Lincoln Boulevard. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to do that.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two announcements on Saturday, June 9th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Beverly Hills Hilton Hotel in 9876 Wilshire. There'll be a, West Angeles CDC and the Hollywood Black Film Festival will be holding a workshop on business procurement opportunities in the entertainment industry. And there'll be, all of the national networks will be there, from Fox, ABC, NBC, and CBS. And the second one is that on Sunday, June 10th, at 1:00 at the Nate Holden Performing Arts Center on 4700 block of Washington Boulevard, they'll have an extraordinary Sunday afternoon for visual and performing arts. And so, two announcements.
Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? Do we have any? Mr. Reyes?
We'll be having a public committee at 2:00.
Thank you.
Come see me.
You win for the most, for the quickest announcement today. Any adjourning motions today, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardinals Gruel, Hahn, Weeza, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Weiss, Weston Zine, Garcetti.
Thank you. Will next be in session tomorrow, June 6th, Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. here in John Farrow Council Chambers. Have a great day, and the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.